I call to order, I call to order the August 26, 2019 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the floor.
Mrs. Bates.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, August 12, 2019, and the regular meeting, August 12, 2019.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Bolton, please present the August 15, 2019 Finance Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I will do that. We had our usual monthly update from our governmental liaison folks, at least in writing. We were very pressed for time that day, and since the legislature's been out of session, they were kind enough to submit in writing some of the issues that we need to be following, and those are part of the minutes, as you can see. And then also, we had the Treasurers' monthly updates, which we do normally every month, obviously. And then we did have an ever-increasing number of community reinvestment requests, actually announcements more than requests, and you can see that those are tabulated. We have seen, and the Treasurer brought to our attention, that accelerated pace for those CRAs. We did an update regarding the Property Tax Working Group that is chaired by Vice Mayor Smithman, and talked a bit about their presentation this past month. And next month, they're actually talking specifically about abatement, not only what to do in order to stabilize neighborhoods that go through some of the changes, whether it's gentrification or development. We also had just an introduction of the ideas regarding our capital monies that we will need for expansion, for property inventory, and had just a preliminary discussion, had a lengthy presentation with good detail and explanation from the CPP, Cincinnati Preschool Promise Interim Director and Finance Director, and we'll be following up later tonight, I believe, with that additional information. We were very pleased that you could read the actual written statement from Ms. Westheimer, which is included in the minutes, because it is quite specific. And I know that Superintendent has, Ms. Vera Brooks, our preschool person here, also to help us understand some of the changes that are being proposed, and the administration can give us some guidance as to where we need to be moving and what we need to be doing. We talked again about the way to look at preschool, so that we are finding more and more ways to reach out to the population we're particularly interested in. We did mention again the concern that we still have regarding the 300% poverty piece. And then we adjourned into executive session in preparation for the Treasurer's, not her evaluation, but her new goals, and also the rating regarding her final compensation for this particular year. Submit as written.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about the report? Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis, please present the August 22, 2019 Policy Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This meeting was held just last week. We addressed a couple of alcohol waiver requests that you will see tonight. We had an at-length conversation about racial disparity language needing to be added to the equity policy. Thank you, Member Murawski, for bringing that to our attention. We actually asked the administration to bring to us information as to where racial inequalities exist inside the system, so that we could be intentional in regard to how we address them and how we add those, or how we suggest we'll add racial disparity into the equity policy. So the administration is going to bring that back to our September 19 Policy Committee Meeting. We reviewed the Finance Committee policy recommendations, and will recommend for the September 4 Board Meeting. We continued our conversation in regards to the long-term lease of schools' facilities policy, and we still have some concerns with the administration bringing us more information, and we wanted to add this back to the Board Matters conversation, so the full board can have more discussion about it before we update it, and we'll do that at a future meeting. Ms. Davis is going to work with you, Madam Chair, to get that on the Board Matters agenda in the future. We reviewed policies on school visitors, high school diplomas to World War II and Korean Conflict veterans, and we'll be presenting those at the September 19, I'm sorry, at the next, at an upcoming Board Meeting for recommendation. We reviewed policy 9270, equivalent education outside the schools, homeschooling, and asked the administration to add statutory language to that policy. We reviewed 9700, relations with organizations, and asked administrations to discuss the policy with the management team and with principals, and to bring that back to policy. We reviewed the next five policies, and we'll be presenting those for recommendation at the September 4 Regular Business Meeting, those being Policy 3120, 0.09, Policy 8475, Policy 9160, 9500, and 9555. Then we had a robust conversation. We want to thank John Reeves, CPS parent of a kindergartner, who brung to policy the issue around child sexual assault. We had an in-depth policy with, in-depth conversation with administration around our harassment of student policy, and still had questions in regard to sexual assault maybe in hidden places, and what was it that the district currently had in place. And we asked the administration to get that back to us for our next meeting, so that we can continue and make sure that we're ahead of the curve in regard to child sexual assault. We wanted to be specific about our policy and be even more in-depth than our current sexual, I'm sorry, our current harassment policy, which covers sexual assault. I present the Policy Committee Minutes as written for adoption.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
First, I want to thank you for dealing with Mr. Reeves. He reached out to me prior to that meeting, and I had lost his contact, so I'm very glad that you all are dealing with it, and I feel badly that I wasn't able to come through on that one. I do want to talk, though, and this is, we don't want to belabor this tonight, but as a person who was on the Policy Committee, I think with the Chair, and also Elisa Hoffman, when we wrote the equity policy, I think I was perhaps one of the ones that brought it back from national as well. And we did so much research and drafting, and the President did an awful lot of editing, as I recall, of my wonderful flowery language and what have you. That's a good team. I hesitate on two matters regarding the racial disparity piece, because a long discussion that we had was, how do you itemize this? If you don't have the kind of language that we have here, are we also then, do we list every one of those sorts of disparities, whether it's gender, whether it's sexual preference, or whatever? And so we made a determination to use as broader language throughout as we could, as well as be as specific as we could, where we could add. And I also think that asking the administration to come back with some of that data regarding disparities, I think that's also very specifically referenced in the strategic plan, which is where I think we, after we first heard the first draft of the strategic plan, I think it was Mr. Davis who said about something about Kool-Aid, and it was Mr. Murawski who wanted to be much more specific, and I think the drafters and the Superintendent put that in where it needs to be, which is strategic in the strategic planning. But I would hesitate to ask them to come back as early as the following month, that it is a larger issue, and it might not be a bad idea to at least give them a couple of months to put that data together. I just think that would be fair to them, because it's a very intense, and they have done a lot of it, because we've seen that in student achievement, and I know that particularly Member Murawski and Mr. Davis have been very, very specific about those requests. But I think we need to give them enough time to put that together. But I'm thrilled it's in the strategic plan. But I will be interested in having the discussion about putting it in or not putting it in the equity policy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I also, I want to concur with Board Member Bolton, having been a part of that, and hopefully I contributed more than just editing.
That was the good stuff.
But that was the good stuff, right. But I think what Policy Committee is raising is an important issue. And I think it's all in the implementation piece, which I think is what Ms. Bolton is alluding to, that the information is there. I think our administration will make a very solid effort to make sure that we look at data, because that's, in fact, what we want to do, is we want to see the data and see how the data impacts. I think it's a welcome thing that Policy is thinking about it, and maybe a report periodically on that data to the committee, to Policy, or wherever, whatever committee is appropriate. So I'm hesitant to be that specific, because if we're going to be that specific, then, I mean, we're, I just think that it could get too wordy and really lose the context.
Well, I again want to thank Member Murawski for bringing this up, and I want to be clear that I appreciate Member Murawski bringing this up, because when it comes to race, often when it's the black man bringing things up, it's an issue. I think it's important that we are understanding what are the disparities. Nationally, we know that African-Americans are disciplined more. I don't know what the disparities are in the Cincinnati Public School District. I'd like to be able to address that directly. Nationally, we know African-Americans are behind, are lagging behind nationally on academic achievement. I don't know that to be true of Cincinnati Public Schools, but I'd like to see that data, so we can discuss it directly. And when it comes to this conversation about, you know, well, gender or something else, well, for me, when everybody else catches a cold, black people get pneumonia. So I like to check everything out. Let's look at the disparities, and if it comes to pass that it's race that needs to be addressed, let's address race. The conversation around ensuring that it's in the equity policy, I think only strengthens the equity policy. The inclusion into the strategic plan, I thought, was also a strengthening of the strategic plan. But this broad-based disparity discussion will continue to frustrate African-Americans like me, that want to be direct. You know, everybody's got disparities, I know. You know, I've got friends, we have these conversations about race, and a good friend of mine wants to talk about working-class people. That's his, that's his thing. If we're talking about working-class people, he's on my team. When I'm talking about poor black people, oh, now we got an issue. For me, the conversation around racial disparity is one that is important for this district, and we need to know what the data is. Until I see the data, it's just a conversation. And that's why we asked the administration to bring that back to policy. If they need more time, of course, we always work with the administration to ensure they needed more time. We didn't have the appropriate administration in our policy meeting, so we're talking to our General Counsel about going back to the administration and bringing that back, and I'm sure that he's more than equipped to let us know the amount of time he needs. We've got things on the policy agenda from transportation that's almost a year on the policy agenda. So I think we're equipped enough, Member Bates and Member Bowers and I, to allow staff the necessary time to do their work. But I do not want to miss the relevance of what we're asking for. And for me, it doesn't matter if we get it in student achievement, or we get it in policy. Until we see the data and discuss it directly, we're not going to know what these disparities are that we're addressing.
Mr. Murawski?
Thank you, President Jones. And I appreciate the backstory on that, Member Bolton. And I, as a former teacher of words, understand the value in not putting yourself into a corner with too much specificity. The only thing I'll say now, because this will obviously come up again, so to your point, I also don't want to belabor the point, but I would just respond to Mr. Davis, because I, for a living, look at this data. It is race, and there's not an institution in America where anybody outperforms white or anybody underperforms black, not an institution anywhere. Healthcare, health outcomes, poverty, education, and that's due to 400 years of very concerted efforts to make sure that black people perform worse. And so that's why I'm interested in calling it out directly, because if it's not called out directly, then it doesn't get addressed. And similar to the conversation when I do infant mortality policy work on my day-to-day, you say racism is killing babies, and infant mortality is a black woman's issue, what about poverty? What about, it's easier for white people to talk about poverty, Ozzy. I'll say it if you don't want to. It's easier for white people to talk about working class. It's a lot harder for us to admit that there's not an institution in America where anyone outperforms us or underperforms black people. So I think it's important, governing a public school district, that we call it out, but that's all I would add to that.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton.
Just very quickly, I don't think we, I disagree with anything that's been said, but I do, for the public's sake, that may not have ever read the policy, the first paragraph of the policy does outline all of the areas where we think there are disparities, or where there could be, and the lead one, of course, is race. The second paragraph talks about these disparities are unacceptable and are directly at odds with the Board's vision. Cincinnati Public Schools is a community that ensures equitable access to a world-class education, unleashing the potential of every student. I will say, historically, there are some districts that have one policy only about race, and we made the conscious determination not to do that. But I think the real issue here is looking at the data, and if we can give the administration enough time to continue to put all that together, I think that would be very helpful, and it will help us move through the strategic plan, and I think that's why it's great that it's directly there. And yes, I know student achievement would be happy to, and does talk about this quite often. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so, Ms. Bowers?
As I'm sitting here thinking, I just want to add something to our, to the conversation regarding Mr. Reeves. His presentation was really mostly about prevention of sexual assault, not really a lot about what we do as our policy for harassment, but it was more about holistically looking school-widely about a prevention initiative.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing regarding the report, I think we accept, and I think we are 100% in favor of moving forward with gathering information and data. We can come back and visit the discussion on policy. We can change policy anytime we need to change policy. And so let's look at the data first, and we can come back. I think everybody agrees that it is an important subject. Are we good with that, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion is on the floor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a sec?
Second.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. We had two reports, so I need a motion to, we made a motion to approve the reports. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Good conversation. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce the first presentation.
Yes. So our first presentation is from our Talent Development Department. As we think about improving academic achievement within the district, as outlined in the strategic plan, it would be remiss of us not to also focus on talent development, considering the fact that we have over 6,000 employees within our district. And so we know that in order to improve the outcomes for kids, we have to also improve our approach as it relates to talent development. So Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty will provide the introduction to this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell, and good evening, all. We so appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and to share a little bit of the work of talent development thus far. I would like to introduce some of the folks who will be presenting this evening. Sarah Brody is our recently hired Director of Talent Development. She joined us in April. Rolanda Smith used to be in the Office of Community Engagement, and now she has joined the talent team. And Jenny Malk, you may remember, as the former principal of Pleasant Ridge Monastery, but she is with us as well.
With a dynamic group.
Yes. So they are going to take some time to share with you what has been happening in the area of talent development.
Good evening. Hello. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. And thank you to the board for inviting us this evening to share a little bit about our work. So first, I want to share with you that the work of talent development fits squarely under the optimized capabilities portion of our strategic plan, which we feel really good about, because we believe strongly that with great people, we can really advance the outcomes that we can achieve for our students in preparing them for life. We are focused primarily on increasing employee engagement, because research has shown that there is a strong link between higher levels of employee engagement and higher productivity for our staff, lower rates of absenteeism, and less turnover. And I want to share with you the four major focus areas of the Talent Development Department this year. We have a vision that Cincinnati Public Schools will be a destination district with an unparalleled employee experience, where all of our employees are very connected to our core values. We also are focused on developing a reputation for professional growth for our employees, so that we are offering really high-quality and transformational professional growth and learning experiences. Third, our focus is on a strong pipeline of leaders, and this includes both cultivating leadership in central office and in the field, as well as providing support and training for our current leaders, which is really important. And our fourth area of focus is developing highly effective and equitable systems upon which we can base all of our talent work and the good work happening in CPS. And so I'm very pleased that I have my colleagues here to help me walk you through a little bit more detail on these focus areas. I'm going to hand it off to Rolanda Smith, our Manager of Employee Experience, to talk a little bit about how we are becoming a destination district.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So our number-one focus area is improving the employee experience. And to that end, we've implemented two successful strategies that we are proud to share with you tonight. The first one is actually the vision of our Treasurer and our Superintendent, and that is the incorporation of our Employee Care Center. And if you haven't had a chance to come by and visit, I encourage you to do so. We coordinate the efforts at that center on a daily basis. The services that are available to our employees in this one-stop-shop, they all include benefit support, background checks, badging, payroll, and ITM support. So no more running from floor to floor all over the building to get your needs met. The second strategy that we've implemented is a new, robust, new employee onboarding session. And during these sessions, we introduce our newest colleagues to the CPS way. We share with them the We Are CPS core values. We also cover, again, payroll, benefits, ITM, environmental health and safety, and character strengths. And I especially want to thank this evening President Jones for attending each and every session last year to not only welcome our new employees, but to specifically grow relationships with them. So thank you, President Jones. I will also share that these monthly sessions, we've seen a 94% satisfaction rate, and I would say that that's good news in year-one startup. So the photo that's featured here, it's from our August 1 onboarding session. And lastly, before I turn it over to Jenny, I will also say that we not only conduct business during those sessions, but we have a good time. And now I will turn it over to Jenny to cover focus area number two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am going to talk to you a little bit about professional growth. So as we strive to be a destination district, we all know that it is critically important that every single employee has access to opportunities to grow and feel like they have the tools and resources to be effective. And so we are really excited to be able to start working with Kevin Rosebrook, who is our Professional Learning Manager. He's going to help us continue to think about ways that we can make professional growth opportunities more accessible for all employee groups, and to ensure that we're providing quality professional growth situations. At this point, though, what we focused on is making sure that we align the development opportunities that are available to the competencies, to the standards, and to the Board's strategies and strategic plan, which resulted in, and you probably got sick of getting all my emails about all the different trainings, but we are very excited that 325 employees across employee groups, so not just teachers, not just principals, but across all employee groups, participated in training on equity, cultural proficiency, and resiliency last school year. We are also excited that we have created a four-part learning series for eight different cohorts of employees, again, all employee groups, grounded in communication and collaboration, that will kick off on September 5. And last, but not least, we recognize that sometimes our employees are looking for professional growth opportunities that maybe we don't have the capacity to be able to provide. So last spring, you got to hear about one of our partnerships with Miami University, that's working with our school leaders who are interested in becoming administrators and growing that skill set. We are also excited to partner with Western Governors University, which is an online accredited university that allows individuals at a very affordable rate to earn their bachelor's and master's degrees in a variety of programs, but particularly in a Cato 12 program. We were looking specifically at ways that we could tap into that paraprofessional pipeline of talent and make it more accessible for those individuals to grow into the teaching profession. The very cool part about this partnership is, besides being affordable and competency-based, they are also providing CPS employees with scholarships up to $2,500 each. So we were thankful for that partnership as well, and look forward to growing many more. The third area, and I promised my team I would be succinct, so I know everybody thinks I'm quiet. I'm really not, especially when I start talking about this stuff, because I'm really excited about it. But I promised to be to the point, because I could stand up here all night. The third area is leadership The third area is leadership development. And we know that we are always needing to keep in mind the fact that the whole point is student achievement and growth. And if you think about what has the largest impact on children learning, those are the teachers and the teaching and learning happening in our classrooms. So we have to ensure that the leaders in our school system have the resources, the tools, and the knowledge to effectively support teaching and learning. So we wanted to make sure that we started off by increasing leadership support for both central office and school leaders. Last year, we focused on a partnership with University of Washington. We looked at what principal support and supervision looked like and if we were doing a really great job at that. We've done some restructuring, and we have the Directors of School Leadership providing support for principals and also their instructional leadership teams focused on making teaching and learning a priority. We also, though, cannot underscore the importance of central office leadership and that partnership with the schools so that the schools are able to do their jobs effectively. And so we partnered with world-renowned Leadership Pipeline Institute to provide training and development. They worked with our performance leadership team, all directors, and all managers to ensure that we were aligned in our leadership practices and our expectations. This is probably the one I'm really pumped about, is the expanded opportunities for emerging leaders. This is my 21st year in the district. If I had not had an opportunity to grow, I'm not sure if I would have looked elsewhere for it. I want everyone to have that opportunity, whether you're a formal or informal leader. So we are really excited to announce several different opportunities for emerging leaders. We're going to pilot, this year, Leadership CPS. That's an interactive leadership development program for CFOP, ASME, and civil service. We're going to start with those employees that are working at central office in Iowa Street this year, and then we look forward to rolling it out across the district as we move forward. We're also looking at that leadership pipeline to lead into the principalship. So what are we doing to support our teacher leaders? What are we doing to support them as they move into assistant principal roles? And what are we doing to prepare assistant principals for principalship candidacy? So we're looking at reorganizing and have restructured our Assistant Principal Academy. I could keep going. There's more, but it'll be built out of our time, and we really do look forward to structuring some strong career pathways with a strong pipeline of leadership to support those pathways. I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah, who's going to talk about focus area four, which has to do with the highly effective equitable systems that we need to be able to do this work.
Thanks, Jenny. All right. So I'm going to bring us home in our fourth focus area, where we're looking at how we are strengthening our systems to ensure that they're highly effective and equitable. We've done a really interesting body of work, for all of you talent geeks out there, where we have developed and piloted a new set of competencies that goes in our performance evaluation system. And these competencies embody the skills and behaviors that CPS employees ought to embody to be an excellent employee here in central office. And so those competencies are piloted with our performance leadership team as the guinea pigs last year, and we are excited that this year, for all central office employees and Iowa Street administrators, they will be seeing these new competencies in their performance evaluations for the 2019-2020 school year. And we're providing a robust set of trainings around how to make sure that both supervisors and employees are equipped to utilize those competencies from an evaluative standpoint, as well as a feedback and growth standpoint effectively this year. So that's very exciting and really strengthens and undergirds our performance evaluation system to ensure that it's meaningful and useful for staff. And secondly, the other body of work I'll highlight related to this, and as Jenny said, there's more, but we only have 10 minutes, is that we have developed and piloted an equity framework that Jenny's good work has been doing with the Equity Committee. And this framework tool can be used to analyze any program or initiative in CPS. And thus far, they've really looked deeply at disciplined data with it to identify equity disparities. So that's, that's that area. And then I'm just going to share with you a little bit of a look, a look forward. So what we're hoping to focus on this year in these areas, just as sampling, but around the employee experience, we're going to be expanding our CPS Ambassador Program. It's focused very heavily on central office with our culture work and making sure that all of our schools are really hearing about and living the CPS core values. That's really important to increase engagement. We are also supporting leadership pathways by developing and actually publishing and codifying what it takes to move from one employee level to another, and we're going to be delineating those for particular employee groups, starting with food service. Thirdly, we are going to be expanding our professional learning opportunities and making sure that those are connected to our new competencies that I just talked about so that they're really strategic. If we know we want folks in central office to be improving their clear and candid communication, that we would offer corresponding development and training with that. And I would say we're super excited to be able to quantify and develop a baseline of our employee engagement metrics in central office. This year, we're partnering with Gallup to deploy a new employee engagement survey that's based on best-practice research in the field and really quantify and understand where our areas of strength are and areas for growth so that we can tweak and refine our strategy as a talent department to make sure that we're seeing movement in these core areas of engagement that we know are linked to things like employee effectiveness, productivity, retention, and attendance. And last but not least, we've also seen a need to support central office leaders and some common practices, and so we're developing toolkits and resources to support them and their leadership. So with that, I will stop talking and share our contact information with you, but also open it up if there's any questions. We'd be delighted to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board members. Mr. Davis, I saw you first. Mr. Morosky.
Mr. Morosky was first, but I don't mind.
Okay. It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry.
He's a good guy. So is this, does this also relate to teachers and principals and staff inside the schools?
Yes, sir. So certainly, employee engagement will span all employee groups. This is our first year in existence, and our heavy focus is going to be central office this year. But certainly, a lot of our tools and supports will touch, as Jenny spoke about, aspiring principals. We'll also be, over the years, expanding the engagement survey to include additional employee groups. And certainly, as I also mentioned, the culture work, the good work Rolanda leads around connecting employees to our core values, touches all employees, and will be increasing our presence in schools with teachers and school leaders.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Morosky.
Geez.
I'm going to have to learn how to turn this way.
It's okay. No, you're doing fine.
As I said to the superintendent, I talked about it. It's okay. I just want to say thank you so much to all of you. I love, and to Jenny, don't apologize for emails. As Jenny at least knows, I typically respond every time I get an email from Jenny because the things that you're doing with your trainings are really, really, really impressive. Speaking as somebody who came from institution in a former life that doesn't even let those things be talked about, to sitting on my Equity Committee at my employee, like, I oftentimes talk about some of the interesting things I get to do at work and how they apply here, but I take a lot of what you're doing over to children's as well because it's, there's no, I wish everybody could see these emails, and since we have a little audience and TV cameras today, you all need to know that our employees have extremely robust, intense, professional development opportunities that help them work with children in the 21st century America at a time when it's extremely important, maybe more important than it in time since I've been alive, that we treat each other nicely and with respect. So I need to call that out. It's a really big deal, so thank you for leading in that way. And then lastly, just something that I'm really, really excited to hear about, because I was just talking with a bunch of friends this past week and weekend about, was Para Pipeline, and just heard about it. So I'm just excited to hear more about that, maybe October, November, how much time it may be a student achievement report out, like, of how that's going and however we can be supportive. That's really great. Thanks.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. And you're right, it's a, it's a great group. I know particularly a former principal that's there helped create a, a great culture at a, at a great building, and it makes a difference in the neighborhood, and it's made a difference on the east side of town. Appreciate it, Jenny. I have several specific questions, real, real quickly, and you've mentioned the Para Pipeline. I know we've worked on that before, and it sounds like we're trying to do that a bit more. I'd also suggest some of the folks that work for us as coaches who have, you know, the interest in working with young people, a list of our coaches, be they dance coaches or violin coaches or football coaches. There's a, if they're interested in doing that, they probably have the, the stuff that we would want to see, maybe in the classroom or elsewhere. Question, we have to, okay, a number of PD things that are in contracts that are taking place at the site level. Who is overseeing what's happening at the site level, that it is in, it's compatible or it is in keeping with this, your initiative and your efforts?
So we are in the middle of a transition right now. That work used to be done in conjunction with Beth Dimico, who sat over in the Marison Academy, and talent development is taking over that work at this time. So, so work that is out in the field where there are applications for professional development, those are flowing now through talent office and then working closely, obviously, with our partners in teaching and learning to make sure that it's all aligned to the strategic plan. We are very focused on that.
Okay, great. And the, the new equitable culture and effective, highly effective, we can talk a lot about professional development again and again, and having a positive environment and culture, and it's all the, it's everyone. I was particularly pleased that Mr. Johnson had the bus drivers all gather. I think that was very important earlier in the summer. So this culture has to be for everybody, but I'm concerned as to some of the stuff that might be outlined unless you change contracts and evaluation tools. I mean, that's a long process to do because they override much of what you might be trying to do. So I just think we probably need to, if you cannot, you don't have to talk about that tonight, but that's something that I know some of us are preoccupied with, so that would be important. But do check out the coaches and, and do see what we can do to, to do that pipeline. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes. We've spoken before regarding my interest in any intentionality with the district and growing diversity in our teachers and CPS schools. And we talked about a research that I read regarding students do better when they have teachers, at least one teacher in elementary school that is of the same race as they are, and you and I have talked about that. So is there any, like, timeline, any intentional efforts in identifying some of those, maybe paras, to, to move? And if that is the case, I mean, what is the intention and how are you going to do that?
Yeah, so it's twofold, actually. We know that in order to become a destination district, we not only need to recruit folks to come to join our CPS family, but we also actually need to attract them. So that's partly where the employee experience comes in, as we build that employee experience for people, that we actually attract folks here who are pounding on our doors, saying we want to be part of CPS. But the other piece of your question around intentionality, we are recruiting paras to be part of our employee pipeline to become teachers who are folks of color and who are also willing to serve in areas that are hard to staff. So particularly math, science intervention specialists, where right now, people who are in those areas have lots of choice to have various employers across this city.
And then a final comment, having had the opportunity to be a part of the onboarding process every month and sharing this with board members, I think one of the things that I like about that process is that everybody who attends is welcomed and made to feel that they, that their particular job, no matter what level it is, is valued. And so I appreciate that structure, and on, on top of getting the information about the district and their role and all of that, it, this group has fun, so they get to know each other. So that's part of creating that culture of excellence. So I appreciate that, and thank you for doing that. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce our next presentation.
Yes. So our next presentation is regarding health and safety and is directly related to our strategic plan. And so I would like to call Ralph Ruendan, who is the head of our security, to provide
We have school-based health centers in our schools, so we have 24 of them. They can go right down the hall and see a nurse or see a doctor. All of our schools have a wellness plan, which
Was that it? I didn't touch anything. I know.
We have school-based health centers in our schools, so we have 24 of them. They can go right down the hall and see a nurse or see a doctor. All of our schools have a wellness plan, which
Whoa.
We have school-based health centers in our schools, so we have 24 of them. They can go right down
Can we just skip things that Never used to have to wear these. Now I do. Okay. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner, I appreciate your, the opportunity to come up and talk a little bit about how we're securing the schools better each and every day. So we'll start out with the, the health and safety goal that we are all committed to putting the safety Whoa. Okay. The safety and physical, social, and emotional health of our students, staff, and partners at the forefront of everything we do. The strategic measure 2A is to decrease the number of critical safety events in our schools. The Critical Response Matrix Process Maps for Missing Children Protocol, Weapons in Schools, and the Injured Employees was developed through the, what's the name, in the Matrix Team, the swim lane, is what we all got together and developed those. CPS Safety and Security Services. There's two administrators, a supervisor, security investigator, and training coordinator. And we have five response team members. Response teams, they're on call to respond to school and site emergencies, investigate reports of dangerous situations, conduct random searches for board policy, and coordinate inspections of safety systems and AEDs. We also have 169 school-based security assistants throughout the district. Our security response team and the security in the, in the district last year all received the CPI, which is a crisis prevention intervention. And each year, we're going to have them all recertified during our, on our PD days so they can continue to learn. The school safety equipment that we've got in all of our schools, we have naturally the visitor lobby guard system, badging system. When anybody, any visitor comes into the school, they go by this, this school lobby guard. If they have a driver's license, they can scan it, or if they don't have any ID, they can enter it all in physically on there, and it gives us a paper badge where they put on so they can be identified when they're in the school. If the, if the individual is not for one reason or another, it'll flag them if they have any, it does a background check is what it does. And there's some individuals we don't particularly want in our school, so that will flag them. We have more than 5,000 school security cameras now throughout the schools. We have walkthrough metal detectors at all of our high schools that are used every single day. All the, the students go through them. There's some schools that we There's some schools that we can't get every single student through every day, due to the numbers. Walnut Hills has, I think, close to like 3,000 students. It's virtually impossible to get 3,000 students through the, the walkthroughs every single day, but we change it up. Some days, we could have every fifth one, every 10th one, every other one, but you have to be consistent on what you do. You can't pick and choose which ones you want to come through. It's however the numbers fall. We also have the security personnel in the schools and response teams. They all have wands, metal detector wands, which are small, they use a lot of them at the sporting events. The school safety equipment, other than that, we have the safe, the safe entry systems, which allows access for first responders, without anybody being in the building. All of our Cincinnati police officers have access cards, where they can just go to school, go right in, using their access card. We have what they call Mark's Radio, which is a school emergency radio. It provides countywide police communications. In other words, when you hit the right button on that radio, every agency within Hamilton County will respond to that school. We only use that in the active shooter incidents, or severe emergencies, because you can bring them in, and they'll bring in the helicopters from the Sheriff's Department and everything. And it works, because when we first started this, one of the buttons accidentally hit our school, and, and the helicopter was over the top of that school in minutes. We also have a lockdown and weather alert buttons in every school. We have more than 1,600 portable security, security radios, which are the walkie-talkies that all the security officers carry, the principals carry, we have several lead teachers carry. They can communicate throughout their building on a daily basis, and they can also have, they also have a channel on, where they can communicate, if necessary, to other schools throughout the district, with other security personnel, or principals, whoever they need to call. We have weather radios in, in all the schools. We also have, each school has a safety, a safety crisis emergency plan, which is updated every year by Bill Wong, they keep, it's mandated by law. We do school safety drills. We have six fire drills per year, and it's required by law to have that. We have three safety lockdown drills required every school year, and we also have a tornado drill between March and May during the tornado season. We follow the police lead on our lockdowns, which is ALICE, which is, means alert, lockdown, inform, counter, evacuate. We, that's what Cincinnati police use, and that's what they like us to use, and they are the professionals, so we follow their lead on that. We have secure entry systems. Visitors must be buzzed into the building via the secured office, the office is secure. Visitor, visitors sign in, the lobby guard system, once they're buzzed in, they go in the office, they sign in the lobby guard, they, they get their, their badge, and they can't leave the office until they're buzzed back out into the school building. The lobby guards, I said before, they perform background checks, to prevent the unauthorized personnel from entering the school. Now, what we've also done with the lobby guard, with the help of Jerry Roberts, we set up, he set up a system where now our stayaway letters that we get for the schools, for disordered people that are causing problems in the school, we enter them in the lobby guard. So, now, if they were causing problems in one school, they go to a different school. When they go through the lobby guard, if red flags them, letting them know that they can only be in that building, if their principal's at that building, allows them in there. All visitors granted access into our building must wear an ID at all times. I wear mine everywhere I go, and we expect everyone to wear them. And the ones from the lobby guard, we request when they leave, they hand it back into the office, and they scan it, and it, it scans them out, where then they can leave, so we know that those individuals are no longer in our building. We have background checks prior to all employment. They have the FBI, BCI, and I, background checks, not only for all employees, but all unsupervised volunteers, unsupervised contractors, unsupervised consultants, resource coordinators. In other words, anybody that's around a student that isn't supervised by a CPS employee, has to have the FBI and BCI and I to be around our students. The badges are distinguishable. If a volunteer is allowed in the school to be in the classroom with the teacher, it's different than a volunteer that went down and had the FBI and the BCI and I. Only your, your county, which you reside, you, you need that background check, if you're with a CPS employee, along with the students. But if you're unsupervised, you have to have the FBI and BCI and I. Our school safety protocols, we, in security, and I believe all the rest of the employees, we have to have the required safety trainings every year and sign off on them. We have the bullying recognition, the dating violence, the youth suicide, the ALICE, cybersecurity, child abuse, student experience homelessness, bloodborne pathogens, records confidentiality under FERPA, and general ethics. All, with that, the stop to bleed, the Cincinnati Fire Department has a stop to bleed training. All of our Cincinnati Public School Security last year went through that, they came out to our, our training, our Professional Development Day, and provided that training. They also have a student program at Western Hills High School, where they're teaching the students how to do tourniquets and stop to bleed. We have an emergency school relocation site, that's the Jacob Center. It's, it's maintained for any temporary emergency needs. I believe the last one was rearview, that, when the flood came up, they have all the things they need out there, the classrooms, the office settings, telephones. They have the camera system, secured entry, lobby guards, portable radios, it's all there Also, for the security and safety measures, we continue to have the School Safety Task Force that Ms. Mitchell headed up last year, and that's with the Fusion Center, FBI, Fire Department, Police Department, and a number of other agencies that's partnered up with them, with us. We meet every so often, to give each other better ideas, how to better secure places. We, Department Homeland Security, they support CPS. As a matter of fact, Dan and I, we're teaming up with them, and towards the end of September, they're going to go along with us with their team to go around to every school. They're going to team up with Dan and I, they're going to go to two or three schools with us, show us how to do threat assessments, school by school. So, we're teaming up with Homeland Security for that. Detex alarms, we started adding them on all the doors. There weren't, there were problem doors at the schools. We, we get with the principals, we walk the schools, they tell us which doors are being left open, who's propping them open, if the kids are sneaking out those doors, and we're putting detex alarms on them, so when they open the doors, they go off. So, we're going to continue to do that again this year. There's some schools that are newly built right now, so we're waiting, we'll get with the principal, those will be the first ones we hit. Dan and I also go school by school and do security audits with the principals. We check on the security personnel, make sure they're in full uniform. It's mandated. We provide the uniforms with them, for them, we provide the pants, the shirts, the jackets, so they have uniform. We provide six of each, the pants and shirts, and then they get a jacket. We expect them to always have them, and look professional, they have marked on them, everybody looks the same, it says "Security." Our response team has them, except it says "Response Team" on, on the shoulder. So, we also added 13 additional security assistants this year. That's not counting the ones that retired and replaced, but that's in addition. Since Ms. Mitchell, once again, has been on board, I think we've probably added 25 to 30 security personnel. She's very security conscious, so we do what we can, and the more eyes and ears you have, the better. The reason we do the, the training with them, for the CPI, they can learn better observation skills, better ways to de-escalate situations, and stop things before they even go off. Additional crossing guards, we've added crossing guards to our primary schools, and some high schools this year, we've added. The security, the security and safety metrics that is put out by the American School Board Journal, Safety Checkpoints, we meet 100% of their school approach of security. And then, Council on Greater City Schools, they have recognized us in the past as being the school leaders in security. So, with that, I'll ask if there's any questions. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Ralph. Do board members have questions or comments?
I'm looking this way first.
Ms. Bolton?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple, real quick things, I was, I wanted to make sure you mentioned that about Great City Schools and the other national citation, I think that's great. Does Butler Tech play any kind of role?
Yes. We, we, we provide, we don't provide, but we, security that we hire, we like them to get the Ohio Peace Officers training. Last year, we were fortunate enough with a grant, that we're able to send all the ones that did not have the OPADA with our grant money that we obtained. Now, we've hired some new ones this year, so we let them know that they're probably going to have to pay for it themselves, unless I can come up with another grant. And then, the reason for that, they get training, and like, just like a police officer, except it doesn't go into the firearms or anything like that, but the LOLs and that, so we require that, to have that. And it's, Butler Tech's the only one that we can find that has them. We've been able, and lucky enough, to have a class every year. Usually, it's in March.
That's great. I've taught long enough, how should I say it, before and after Columbine, and everything changed that day, and I know our families are sorry and resent the fact that our kids have to go through these sorts of drills, but they do, and, and we're responsible for their safety, and I, I have a lot of confidence in our security people, and, and your leadership, and, and I would also say that just the previous presentation, a positive school culture, is the first preventive effort of anything bad happening, because you have to, as a teacher, I can recall that you have to depend upon the kids telling you, and the staff has to be engaged to understand what's going on, and, and how to relate, but I, I think we are, we augment that, and also, the taxpayers have paid significantly for buildings with that facility's master plan, that could be designed post-Columbine, and I think we're, that helps us get a leg up on this. But I, I thank you for your leadership, Ralph, and, and, and all of your folks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you so much. That was a very comprehensive presentation. Thank you. Great, moving on, does anyone have any kudos? No kudos? Oh?
Of course he has.
I would like to give kudos to Vera Brooks, our, yeah, a round of applause already. Vera and her team, and some volunteers, and even a student, were down at the Black Family Union, making sure people knew how they could sign up for our five-star quality rated preschool units around the district. So, I just wanted to give you a shout out. I know it's a long, hot day, and y'all did great.
Thank you. Congratulations. Any other kudos?
I'll just add to that one, if I could, they were also at Bonne Hill Day, so there you go. We're getting coverage, and we appreciate that extra time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Bowers, please present any retirements that you may have.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. We have one certificated personnel, Richard Stalnacker, the teacher, and we have two civil service personnel, Yvonne Calhoun and Karen Driftmeyer, who are retiring, and I would like to congratulate them on their retirement.
Thank you. Okay, so we're now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Typically, speakers get three minutes, but today, and in accordance with board policy, because we have, it's either 13 or 14 speakers on the same subject, we're going to ask, assign two minutes. I do want to be, I, by no means want to minimize the relevance of what you're saying, and you will hear the buzzer in two minutes, and I'll ask that you just consider that. We won't intentionally like disrupt someone's flow of thought, but I would appreciate if everyone would be sensitive to those who are coming behind you. So, please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak, and I'm going to call them by threes. Amy Main, Kristen Ford, and Julie Wright.
I'm Amy Main. I have a five and a seven-year-old that both attend Sands Montessori, and I'm here to talk about the bus system this year. I have plenty of complaints about it, but as of today, my children have been lost by the bus system twice, for over an hour both times. For 63 minutes on Friday, neither Cincinnati Public Schools, or First Student Bus System could tell me where my five, or my seven-year-old were, nor could they contact the bus driver in charge of their route. It's 2019. I can have a conversation with someone in France, right now, over my phone, seeing them, but the bus system for a major city can't contact a driver and find out whether a five and seven-year-old student are on the bus. Today, the bus did not show up to their school until an hour after it was supposed to have them home. No one called me, no one texted me, no one emailed me, not the school, not Cincinnati Public Schools, not First Student. When I called First Student, I was put on hold for 35 minutes. When I switched over and called CPS, I heard a voicemail, and nothing else. When I called the school, I got a voicemail. Once again, for over an hour, my five and my seven-year-old were missing to me. No one could tell me where they were. We're not talking about 13-year-old students who would know their way home if they were dropped off at the wrong stop. We're talking about a five-year-old whose biggest excitement all summer was getting on the yellow bus, who is now terrified to get on the yellow bus. My students, my, sorry, my children, have not made it to school on time yet this school year, except for the one time that I didn't bother to wait for the bus and drove them myself. That brings up my second complaint. My children's pickup time is at 8:43 in the morning, their school starts at 9:15. We live in Oakley, their school is in Mount Washington. I know I don't drive the speed limit, but I can't make it that fast there, in that time, and their bus is supposed to pick up two more students after that. That means, on the average day, my kids are never going to get to school on time. I'm one of the lucky parents. I have a good support system with my family, and I have a job that understands. I have been late to work for six days straight, because of the bus system. A lot of people don't have the same type of job I have. At this point, I could have lost my job because of this. If I did not have my mother, who's there to pick them up every day, I definitely would have lost my job. This is something that our taxpayer money pays for. And at that, like I said, in 2019, my children should not go missing for over an hour two days in a row.
Ms. Main, we appreciate that. And again, I don't want to minimize what you're saying, but if you could finish and... I just want everybody to have the same opportunity that you have.
The last point that I would like to make is that when I've contacted both Cincinnati Public Schools and First Student, there seems to be a blame game that goes on. First Student blames you guys, and you guys blame First Student. Obviously, someone is to blame here. And I guess you can tell by the fact that there are this many people coming out to say this. There are so many more people that I spoke to on Facebook accounts and things like that that could not make it out tonight. And this is just not okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Wright, and my daughter is a student at Clark Montessori. And my issue specifically is that one of the bus routes to the west side of Cincinnati was eliminated this year. So, three busloads of students are now being crammed into two buses, which is causing an overcrowding situation. There's been reports from students that they were turned away from the bus and told to go back to the school and call their parents. Students have been taking pictures on the bus, which have been posted to social media, showing that not only are students standing in the aisleways, but also sitting on other students' laps. And then... So, we have a safety situation on the buses themselves. And then, we also, with the students being turned away and told to go back to the school and call their parents, I'm not in a position where I can walk out of my job in the middle of my shift and go retrieve my daughter. Fortunately for the next week or so, my husband is able to. He's able to provide her with transportation home, but that is a temporary situation. And then, we're going to be right back to, she will have no way home if she gets turned away from the bus. And so, right now, parents on the west side. And there's more issues with that, and I'm hoping that some of the other parents on the west side that are here will speak to issues that their children specifically have had. But our children do not have safe nor reliable transportation to and from school at this time. And this is a problem for us. So, I hope that this is something that can be rectified, so we don't have these concerns anymore. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I first wanted to say I had the opportunity to hear you speak, Mr. Davis, at the Together We Rise Conference. It was a pleasure to hear you speak. You raised some wonderful points about challenging others and holding people accountable. So, this is what made me take an eight-hour shift, pick my kids up, and come today. It sounds like a lot of the individuals here are all having the same issue with transportation. I have too experienced with First Student, them picking them up late, them not picking them up at all, them not being able to go out and get kids from routes if you don't call in a certain timeframe. I too work from eight AM to five AM during the day, and I have a very tight schedule because now I have a little one. So, I have to be at her daycare provider at five-thirty to pick her up. So, we rely on the bus systems to be on time. We rely on the bus systems to be consistent. At this present time, my son, who's sitting back here, goes to CCPA. He was going to Saint Joseph's. It's been two weeks, and he still doesn't have bus service. We got a blue card maybe two days before school, no, two days after school started with the old bus route on Friday after numerous emails, phone calls, and an actual visit here to talk to customer service. We got a yellow card with the same information. I reached out to Lauren Johnson, and I haven't received an email or a phone call back. I sent an email to Pam Williams. I still haven't received an email or a phone call back. When I reached out to Ohio Department of Education, their recourse was to bounce me back to board members so that I could get this addressed with respect to time. And you guys have a lot more people with a lot more issues. I did request a written response. I do have a few questions. I just want to know, do we have an estimated timeframe from when the bus service will be conveyed? It says in the Ohio Operations Safety and Rules, it stipulates that if your child is supposed to get transportation, it has to be worked out within ten days. My son has started school on the fourteenth, so that would make, in business days and school days, that would make that the twenty-eighth. And what is my recourse for what happens if we don't have bus service established for him by the twenty-eighth? I've also incurred costs because I can't take them back and forth to school. I rely on the bus to get them there. I'm up to ninety dollars at this point, and I've been told that there is no way for me to be reimbursed, even though I'm providing transportation for my child that Cincinnati Public Schools is there going to provide.
Thank you. Thank you. I do want to take a moment. Typically, you can go on. I just want to make a general comment. Typically, we do not have a discussion at this point, but when we're done with all of our speakers, I asked the superintendent and/or Mr. Johnson to respond to the transportation issues, and it was going to be part of her report, but rather than have folks wait, we'll ask you to respond after the speakers. Is that okay?
Yeah, it is. And if it's okay with you at the very end, I see that Mr. Johnson has two additional staff members with him. At the end of this, it would be helpful if we would be allowed to let them step out and be able to hear some of the very specific concerns, so we can jump on them as quickly as possible.
Great. Thank you. I'm sorry? Yeah. Okay, the next three, and my apologies if I mispronounce. Sarah Neese, Kelly Ashton Hand, Amy Waldfogle.
Hi, my name is Sarah Neese. I have two daughters. One goes to Spencer, and one goes to Sands Montessori. I'm here, I have a unique situation this year because my daughter, my one daughter is going to Spencer, and she is not on the bus. And my other daughter is going to Sands, and she's only on the bus part-time. But what I saw on Facebook, which was alarming to me, was last year, my daughter going to Sands was lost on the bus. I was lost for over two hours. The bus was pulled over on the side of the road. No one could tell me where my six-year-old daughter was. I was hysterical. I called the police. I came to a board meeting after that and sat and had a conversation and was assured that it would be addressed and that things would be better. When it was addressed, that, that meeting with the board members, everybody kind of had the same attitude of, this happens every year. And it was kind of, it almost felt like it was an acceptable thing that it happened every year. So, I was very hopeful that it would be different this year. And what I have seen so far this year globally across CPS is it's not different. So, it's alarming to me. I'm blessed that I don't have to rely on the bus system as much, but I feel very sorry for people that do. And I, you know, I kind of put something out there in the social media world that this is something I've experienced and been, you know, kind of made a promise that it would be better, and I don't see the work being done. I feel sorry for our students who make pledges that they're going to be on school, at school, on time, ready to work, and we can't get them there. I think it's sad that we can't hold our end of the deal up, but we're asking students to do it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Ashton Hand. I have a six-year-old son that goes to Sands Montessori. And my son has been late to school every single day, twenty minutes late, and he is missing classwork. The bus has consistently been late. I have tried calling First Student, and I have either been put on hold or I have had phone calls unanswered. I've called CPS Transportation. I've emailed CPS Transportation, and I've not received a single response back. He is also twenty to forty minutes late coming home. And it's very frustrating that I have a schedule. I have received two cards saying when the bus is supposed to pick him up, and they are not picking him up. He is beside himself about going to school. He is missing. He is coming in late every single day, and he's at the point that he doesn't even want to go to school because he is being looked at as he walks into the room, and he is missing pertinent information. And I don't have an answer for him because everybody I ask, everybody I've contacted, has blown me off and told me it will get better within two weeks. Trust me, it will get better within two weeks. But if it's consistently twenty minutes late every single day, I don't know how it's going to get better and what is going to make it better. So, I was hoping to just bring up an issue and hopefully get an answer and get a resolution sometime soon so he isn't forever turned away from school and not wanting to go.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Amy Waldfogle. I am the parent of a Spencer seventh grader, who, since she is a seventh grader, is mortified that I am speaking to you at the moment. But I wanted to speak to you a little bit about the experiences we've had over the last eight years with CPS transportation. This year is no exception. So far, my daughter has missed the equivalent of an entire class bell of her first class because of her bus being late. I hear the excuses every year: traffic, rain, not up on the training yet, haven't learned the routes yet. It's the start of the year. It will get better. I hear this every year. Traffic is not a surprise. There's traffic on the streets every day. Weather is not a surprise. It happens every fall. There are students who need to get on the bus every year. And the reason it gets better is because hundreds of families give up and make other arrangements. That is not a good business model. The district is in charge of these schedules. The Transportation Department has one job. Their job is to make arrangements to get all of the Cincinnati Public School students from point A to point B at the appointed time. The Department of Transportation is, they choose their own timetable, and then they don't meet it. And they say, "It'll get better." It gets better when people quit. That's not acceptable. It needs to be better from the get-go. Other things I would like to have addressed, the communication regarding this is abysmal. Robocalls are haphazard, misdirected, uncoordinated. I have received over the years alerts for routes my child does not ride. I have received alerts for routes my child does ride that have lies in them. I have been on the phone in my driveway asking where my child is, who is forty-five minutes late, and the person at the other end of the line insists that the route is only running twenty minutes behind. And I explain to them the math, and they tell me I'm wrong. I've been doing this every year for eight years now. I don't have the time. It's not my job to make the Transportation Department able to do their job. It is a difficult job. Thirty-five thousand students, trying to get them in all the different places. That's a very difficult job. I don't know how to tell you to do it. That's why I didn't apply for the job to run it. The people who do that job, I expect them to do it.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, Abby Glenn, Casey Hildebrand, Laura Pipitone.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Abby Glenn. I'm a parent of nine children, eight of them products of CPS schools. I myself am a product of a CPS school. I don't have a complaint about the buses. My kids have been catching the buses, I don't know, for like twelve or thirteen years. I've had one problem, so that's not my complaint. And I want to, never have I had a problem with the buses. My problem is the emails, the one-hundred-and-thirty-seven emails that I've received of other children's information. My concern also is, my one child, the only one of mine, and I have five, six of them in school. My kids all go to performing arts, and one of my grandchildren also. One of my kids, I've received an email for about the bus transportation. Four-hundred-and-ninety-seven people received her information. My daughter is a rape victim. My daughter is a rape victim. There is no reason why my daughter or those other one-hundred-and-thirty-six kids' information that I received was leaked to all those people. Some of those children's information was leaked to six-hundred-and-seventy-two people. I may be the only one here tonight complaining about that. That's because I'm concerned. And all I'm asking, and I've reached out to several people at this board. I've had news people give me people's information. I've left voicemails. I've even had a lawyer call me from you guys. I can't get anybody to call me back. All I'm asking for is for my children's, I'd love for all the kids' buses, all the kids that were affected by the emails. I'd love for all their stops to be changed. My kids, I need my kids' stop to be changed. One-hundred-and-thirty-seven, I mean, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven people have my children's information, where they get on the bus at, what time they get on the bus, what route they get on the bus at, the streets. And that's another thing. My kids, their bus stop is on a crime, drug, prostitution-infested street. I went through this last year to try to get them changed. Didn't happen. So, all I'm asking right now at this point, somebody who's heard my voicemail, give me a call back. Change my kids' bus stop, please. I'm begging you. I came here tonight for that reason. Just please change my baby's bus stop. I understand you all have all kinds of deviated stops that you're trying to change. Worry about you all. Keep talking about safety of the kids. This is a safety concern. Change my kids' bus stop, please. Thank you.
Well, my name is Casey Hildebrand. I have two daughters at Sands Montessori. Continuing the rhetoric of the bus system, that is not working. For the last three years, my daughter has ridden the bus, and we've had several scenarios where she's not gotten home till after five o'clock, and nobody knows where she is. This year, our pickup time is at eight forty-two in Madisonville, and our school starts at nine-ten. The bus has been late every day, and my daughters have been late to school every day. And we are being forced to drive them to school, something that a lot of families don't have the flexibility to do. I also want to bring up the matter that a lot of these kids that are riding the bus are not only getting late to school, but they're also missing their free breakfast. So, they're walking into classrooms hungry and late. And that is very concerning to me for the school district. I have requested a bus stop change for the last few years. It was changed two years ago. And now, it is said that the board, it is not a board-approved bus stop. So, the bus stop is now even farther away and on a busy street that is dangerous. So, I am petitioning for that request to be approved again for the safety of four Sands Montessori students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Pipitone. I have a son who's a fourth grader at Spencer, and I have a preschooler at North Avondale Montessori. It was disappointing before school even started that the district released sensitive bus information of, some parents got over five hundred different emails of five hundred different students. And instead of an apology, all we got was a robocall from Superintendent Mitchell telling us how to keep our children safe when you guys gave away all this sensitive information. In the six days of school, the Spencer Center PTSO has collected seventy reports from parents regarding yellow bus complaints. Personally, my son has been late twenty to eighty minutes every afternoon. He has lunch at eleven-thirty. He's not getting home until five o'clock, and he's starving and tired and hungry and anxious. Not once have I received a robocall. I drive my son in the morning, but one time, I got into a car accident, and I still got my son to school before his busted. Calls to First Student have gone unanswered, and calls to the CPS Transportation Department voicemail have been consistently full. My son has had a different driver each day, and every time, in a time when everybody has GPS on their phones, these drivers are still using paper directions, and I see them staring at directions more than I see them staring at the street. I'm disappointed that it requires an article in The Inquirer for us to finally get some information about the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers, Heather Francis, John Meyer, Mallory Welbrot.
Hello. Thank you for taking our...
Hello, thank you for taking our concerns. My name is Heather Francis. I also have two daughters that go to San Suenosori, and I would just like to echo the frustration of the other parents that the bus service is really not acceptable this year, this year especially. Our daughter's bus has been late every day, every day since the school started, and it's frustrating that I don't see any action. I have also tried to call First Student, tried to call School Board, and there's no, nobody will return emails or phone calls. And that's like probably the most frustrating part, you just can't get a response. But I would just like to know what we can do to remedy this situation. I don't want to play the blame game, but what can we do to fix this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mallory, and I'm a freshman at Clark Monosori, and I'm here to speak about the metro bus situation with the buses. So as you probably know, the, one of the routes has been eliminated that goes to the West Side where all of the students live. And it just makes the two other buses that go there a lot more crowded. There's people that are lapping up, there's three to four people in two seats, there's people sitting in places they're not supposed to be sitting, there's people in the aisles. In order to get off the bus, people have to move. Today, when we were on the bus on the way home, people were pushing each other, people were joking around, there was screaming. I heard kids complaining of headaches, which is normal for a bus, but it's becoming a safety issue because there are too many people getting on the bus. I believe it was last Thursday, we were left after school waiting for about an hour because the bus had not come to take us up. All the other buses left, and I would say there were forty to fifty kids waiting there. Our people were calling their parents. Several kids just got picked up by the time the bus came because they didn't feel like getting on the bus because they knew they were going to have to stand anyways. In order to get to the West Side from Clark, it's about an hour, it's about an hour on the bus. And standing all that time after you've been at school all day is tiring. And I know there's a lot of other problems, but this is definitely one. When you're required to go to school every day, and you're working hard, and you're putting in all this effort, and then you just want to get home so you can get your homework done and do your chores and relax, and then you're still having to stand on the bus, it's frustrating. This morning, when we got on the bus, we counted seventeen people getting on my bus stop alone. Just seventeen doesn't sound like a lot, but there are many other bus stops that we stop at on the way there. So, in general, it's becoming a safety issue. Kids are getting tired of it. There could be many solutions to this problem, and I just feel like we haven't gotten the answers that we need. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Meyer, and my son is a fellow student, freshman at Clark Monosori. I also have a daughter at Dater. I did want to quickly say, first, I apologize because there's going to be some disjointed points. I don't have my proper persuasive essay order for you, but I just want to hit on everything that I can. I do want to say, I am so thankful for the public Monosori system that Cincinnati Public Schools provides. It is immeasurable how fantastic it is. Now, every one of CPS's schools is great in every single way. You can always find something special about each one. But getting the kids to school is kind of important, and I understand how complicated and difficult it is. I want to thank the previous parents who came and spoke, who said, "Well, I didn't have a problem this year, but I did have a problem last year." And the consistency of this, standard business practice would be, okay, we see this happening every year, so we need to address it. A greater duty of care is owed to our students and taxpayers than standard business practice, and we are doing neither. There is an immense amount of technology available to get proper routes together that may even allow for elimination of two routes instead of one. We need to use that information. Just so you know, and for the record, the West Side Clark routes that were spoken about, the 2451 was eliminated. I apologize. It was rolled in to the 2432, which was already at capacity last year. And the 2431 is the one that had to turn away eight students at the first day of school. My son does not have as long a distance to walk in the morning as some other students. One of the parents that had students on the 2451 bus last year that commented on Facebook said, "A mile and a quarter was deemed to be acceptable. The bus pickup time is six oh eight." A mile and a quarter means they are walking through a very busy area very early in the morning. My son has six tenths of a mile, not a huge deal. There are five sexual predators on that route. And again, I'm sure there's a lot more other places, but we got the voicemail about three big steps back and everything else. That would put my son in one of two bars on the corner where his pickup is because the sidewalk is three and a half feet wide. So I just ask that a duty of care that is fair to our students is given to this, and that in future years, this is dealt with in June, not July, and especially not August.
Thank you. Again, we do want to have an opportunity to respond, and none of this makes us happy. We hear you, and we have been talking about it too long. But I want our superintendent to have an opportunity to respond, and then we're going to have Mr. Johnson meet with each individual. And I want to make sure, Superintendent, that you get all of these copies. These are just the parents who are here tonight speaking, but I'm sure that there are many more. But I'll make sure you get these. Thank you.
So quite honestly, at the risk of upsetting people and sounding defensive, I would prefer, if it's the will of the board, to allow the transportation team to go out and to start to meet with parents so they can address very specific issues as opposed to me talking about generalities, if that's okay.
That is fine.
So there are three people, and then we can give an update during the superintendent's report.
Okay. Do you want these now? Some of them want, I think it's appropriate for each person to get a response, but some of them are asking for written responses, so as you're talking with them, please make sure that there is some response.
I would also like to ask our Chief Communications Officer to go out with them, Lauren Worley. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay. Let's, okay, we're going to let people take a minute or two to transition here.
Is there a place that they can go?
Oh. What'd you say? Yep. Yes. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move forward with the agenda. And again, for board members, Superintendent does plan to bring this up in her superintendent's report, and we can have more discussion at that time. Okay, Board Matters, Imagination Library, Mr. Morawski, I believe that's your hearing?
So, yeah, so the Imagination Library is put on Board Matters. I don't believe it probably needs any backstory. We had a presentation. There had been an informal agreement made under the past superintendent that the districts would take on the cost of Imagination Library when the contract ended. It has ended. And just to bring everyone back up to speed, for those who were not here for the initial chapters.
Excuse me, Mr. Morawski. Madam Chair, I think somebody put in a card that wasn't called or something.
Oh.
Oh, I'm, it was Mr. Rosen. That, my apologies. I'm just a little discombobulated here. But, okay, we will hear her. My apologies. Okay. Geez, thank you. Thank you. No, well, I'm glad you say something, yeah. Yeah. I'm so sorry. I missed one. And if you don't mind, give us your name.
My name is Abria Drummonds. My children are Jordis, Jordan, and Josephine Cohen. We weren't able to make it on time because we had to find my children to get them this evening. Or otherwise, I would have been on time. My children attend Fairview. I was, I started calling before the school year began this year, trying to get information, information on how my children can get on the school bus. Stand up, Jordis. Come here, Jordan. It was advised to me, excuse me, to have my five-year-old, him, and my seven-year-old walk to school from College Hill to Fairview Clifton Academy. These two, these small children. Then I was told by someone who I was on the phone with, maybe my other parent could call parent. I'm a single parent. I have hard enough time getting their basic needs met, let alone transportation, transportation needs met by the other party. So lately, I've been late to work every day. I've been, I've had to use my lunch, so I have to skip my lunch. I start work at eight-thirty. I have to, I'm sorry, I have to skip my lunch, wait until the end of the day, take lunch to go pick my children up, bring them back to my job, finish my shift, and then go home for the day. I'm grateful that my employer has been flexible without allowing me to do that, but that can't continue on because, one, I can't take my lunch at the end of the day because of our employment, our policies at our job. And, two, I can't bring my children to work with me. I'm paying for somebody to do a before-care program that they aren't able to utilize because they don't have bus transportation. I'm using an after, I'm sorry, Josephine, please come here. I'm utilizing an after-school program that I can't utilize because I don't have transportation home for my students. So not only are you recommending that I utilize a parent that's not available to put my, have my children walk to school to be more flexible, but now I'm also wasting income that I need to use towards other means provided for my children's needs. And then also, I'm advocating for someone else I know. My niece, who lives in Avondale, was recommended, advised to walk to school to Warner Hills. In her bus stop through Avondale, there's been fifteen murders in Avondale.
You're talking about Zaria?
Yes, Zaria Davis. They've advised her to walk to school during that crime-ridden neighborhood to get one of America's most quality education, one of our greatest schools in the country. We're not, but you're advising our children to walk through two crime-ridden neighborhoods. That includes Everston and Avondale to get there. I just, I'm just adding lots of words about how we've been, and I wouldn't call it treated, but it just seems like a lot of things have gone wrong. Like, I did some research on it. You guys closed the posting for the Ruder position on August sixteenth, three days before school started. So how was the routing supposed to be done if we had vacancies there? And then from my school, I was told there were eight hundred people before me. She told me I was eight hundred and one and eight hundred and two to get these two scheduled for transportation. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but so I'm just venting my frustration for a bus system that is definitely needed, I'm sorry, for my children to get back and forth to school.
Okay. So we do want you to join the conversation that's out there, and since we don't have a written document, make sure. Ms. Ruckner, can you take her down to where Mr. Johnson is meeting? And create a document, one of the, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know. She is, right. Thank you. Okay. All right. Gosh, it almost takes us out of our element a little bit, but let's go ahead. Proceed, Mr. Morawski.
So, the, for those who missed the first chapter, my contention was that I felt Imagination Library had proper public purpose. We talked about it in SAC. It was referred to General Counsel and Superintendent, had a meeting with her, leadership team to talk about it more. I have spoken to the Treasurer as well, and been kind of brought up to date. The way I understand it, so I still, I still believe, I still believe it has proper public purpose. I want to be clear about that. So I'm not backing off of that piece. However, I also live in a world governed by budgets that I understand, and I understand that it cannot be done from this zero-to-five. I would like us to consider still adopting the program for three-to-five-year-olds that are Cincinnati Public School students, and see if we could maybe have some sort of program that got more books into the kids. So as opposed to the zero-to-five, everybody, three-to-five-years-old Cincinnati Public students, a book a month, encourage that lap time with mom and dad. And again, not necessarily right now, but sometimes, I would like to still consider that. So I'm backing off of the zero-to-five and the proper public purpose piece, but I still think there is a value in offering these books. If it was something, that would be possible, because again, the budget concerns and the dollar concerns mean quite a bit to me. I can't, you can't make something out of nothing. So if that is something that could be possible potentially, I'd like to gauge the will of the board on that, on that piece.
Okay. Other comments from the board? Ms. Bolton?
Just points of clarification. Obviously, for the public purpose piece, the three-to-fives, I think that makes sense. Would you be suggesting somehow that the medical community would continue to be a part of it, or is it, or is there a partnership? What would be, just us finding ways to have books?
Well, to continue the partnership as it exists, but only with our students in the three-to-five. So in investigating what it would look like to be perhaps a truncated, maybe not as robust, the zero-to-five piece, but the way the partnership currently exists with the medical community, but for those three-to-five-year-olds, yes.
Just, that's what I needed clarification on. Thank you.
Right. I also, I think I came in just sort of hearing, I'm glad you clarified a couple of things. One, I didn't know, and maybe I just didn't hear it, that it had been an informal agreement made previously. That's what I heard. That was the first thing you said, it was an informal agreement.
I believe Superintendent Ronan had sort of like a handshake kind of agreement or a nod kind of agreement that when every child capital is done, it's something that, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah. And it wasn't Superintendent Mitchell, it was her predecessor.
Okay. Yeah, I noted that. Okay. Second point is, of course, I think just what you said, budget concerns. And I think, for me, the, you know, I think I have an issue, if I can be honest, that when we do things like this outside of regular budget cycle, whatever, and, you know, we complicate, I think, the budget process, but more importantly, we set precedents. And I just don't think this is a good precedent to set. I am one hundred percent in favor of early literacy, but I am totally not in favor of setting, establishing precedents where people or organizations that are our partners start to say, they look at their budgets and say, "Well, we can no longer fund this, let's just give it to the schools." And I'm being cynical, but I think we, my personal opinion is that we need to be careful not to do that. But, yes.
And I don't know, I don't know that I would call it cynicism, and I agree with you too about the precedence of it. I, I'm not saying we need to like make some sort of appropriation tonight or anything either. I mean, it could be part of the regular budget process going forward. I think it's an interesting initiative for a public school district to take in this sort of whole child, like the public health and the public education. We already do a lot with our partners in that sphere. So I'm not, I'm not necessarily arguing to upset the coffee cart at this point, nor was I before. I was before, when I was going more for the zero-to-five, proper public purpose piece, was looking to the next budget cycle. I realize some partners in the community want it to happen now. I understood the constraint to that. So I'm not, I wouldn't call it cynicism, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Any other comments? Mr. Davis?
I'd want to know where administration is on this, and I was thinking that Morawski was talking about as we go forward, not right now as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you're asking me my thoughts?
Yeah.
So I think that there's a better comfort level with three-to-five-year-olds who are currently Cincinnati Public School students. I think that that makes a lot of sense. I think that there's the possibility of even partnering with some individuals who may be interested in funding something like this. So it may be helpful to know that in our primary grades, kindergarten through third grade, in many of our schools, we have a take-home program that is, um, done through, uh, Mr. Dick Rosenthal.
Yes.
Rosie Reader, and he has been doing this program for many, many years, but those are for Cincinnati Public School kids who are already in our, um, in our schools. And so there's the opportunity to do something similar to that magnitude. But again, I think our great concern was that, um, the younger kids aren't necessarily in Cincinnati Public and may never come into the district. And so our concern was using district dollars in that way. So, but this is-
I was familiar with Rosie's Reader. So Rosie Reader starts in kindergarten. So, so now, if, if I might, the ideal Ms. Morowski now is bringing forward is maybe pushing Rosie Readers back to three-and-four, three-and-four-year-olds.
I just gave that as an example. It may not be the Rosie Reader program. It may be something that we look at our budget or something similar to Rosie Reader.
Awesome.
Yes. Ms. Bowers?
I would agree with Superintendent and Board Member Morowski, and I talked about this a little bit, um, just identifying our intentional, um, students. And I, I always like to see data connecting somewhere the, the proof of the, you know, reading, uh, with your child, and then even the effects that has on the students with Rosie Reader and ongoingly. So, um, I would agree for the three, um, the three-to-five-year-olds.
And I'm gonna, and I appreciate, Mr. Morowski, that you thought it through a little bit because I was hearing something totally different the last time. So it sounds like whoever dialogued about it, 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 it's a little different approach. But, um, again, I think, um, we're not, what, what I hear you saying is that it's not right now, right? Okay.
And I want to be clear, I'm not changing my mind. I still think it has proper public purpose in five, but I, I, I live in a world governed by reality and dollars. And so I'm, I'm compromising, so.
Okay.
I haven't changed my mind, however. I'm compromising like an adult.
I didn't think you changed your mind. Thank you.
I'm trying to model good behavior.
So where, where are we with this, so we can move forward? Yes?
So the administration would be happy to explore ways to be able to fund this or find someone who might fund this for the twenty-twenty-twenty-one school year.
So maybe we can make that a formal assignment at the end. Thank you. All right, great. All right. Okay. So the next, uh, discussion item under Board Matters is the abatement agreement negotiations. I believe Ms., uh, yeah, we probably need Dan.
We need the attorney.
Okay. So Ms. Bolton?
Yes, uh, if I could just, uh, uh, preface this. This, of course, has been a concern. Uh, we've worked on this for well over a year and a half. Uh, the, um, Board properly sent a letter to, uh, the mayor, uh, and, um, the mayor has responded, and, uh, we've responded to the, or we're about ready to respond to the response. Uh, and, um, I think that it would be beneficial for General Counsel to update us as to where they are, uh, and, uh, give us a little bit more in-depth background to the letter that they are, either have sent or are prepared to send. And, uh, I just want to emphasize that, um, this is, this is, this is not necessarily just a financial decision on both Counsel and, uh, the Board. This is a political decision, and it's time to exercise our political capacity to get a resolution that is good for the district and the city. I also want to remind people, because I've heard some of this framed even tonight, uh, not at our board meeting, but at a previous engagement, that somehow we look like we are against development.
Right.
And there is nothing in our public statement, in our letters, our document, even the full discussion we've had in five different meetings, that doesn't start with, we are very much in favor of development, and more particularly, we just need that development to help neighborhoods and also make us whole and create a future for the, for the community. So, uh, there's a, we think, I, as a board, I believe, we think there's a resolution to be had, and we would hope that City Council somehow gets more involved with what that resolution could be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoi, if you would actually give us an update on kind of the things that have transpired in between these two letters and just kind of where are we at this point?
Yeah, I think, uh, the Board President sent a letter requesting that, uh, City direct its administration to reengage, I think, in these negotiations. Uh, we received a response last week from Mayor Cranley, um, which has been similar to the response we've gotten from the City, which is, is that, um, they have an interest in further understanding the state foundation payments, um, essentially the money we get from the state. We drafted a response, which I think you have in your packets. Um, I, I can add all Board members to that. Um, I, I note that not everybody's here, so if we want to get that out, it may be best just to come from the, the Board President on behalf of the Board, or, or just the Board members here, or I could get telephone authorization to call.
I think you can telephone the people that are not in-
Glad to do that.
-available, because it needs to be the whole Board addressing the whole Counsel, just as it's the President of the, of the Board addressing the mayor.
Yes. Go ahead.
If, uh, that's the will, I'm happy to update the, uh, letter and, and have it for your signature this evening, if, if you want to move this forward.
Okay. I think that just, um, the letter, for me, I think, does speak very clearly to saying, we wish to engage them in this conversation. We don't want another letter. I mean, I'm-
Yeah, right.
We gotta, we, and it's ironic because right before this meeting and another meeting that I was at, happened to run in the Mayor Cranley, who said, well, we can sit down and talk about it right now. And I'm like, no. But, but seriously, we need to really, um, we need to really, uh, uh, maybe think about a timeframe. If we send this letter, we need to specifically say, let's sit down and talk and, and get a time together or whatever. But I think we also need to have a framework for how we want to move forward with this, so when we sit down. And then, so one question would be, do we meet, do we have representatives of the Board and, and administration being a part of this discussion? Is this a whole Board discussion? How do we want to move forward on that? Uh, Ms., Ms. Bolton first, Mr. Davis?
I would say that this letter gets sent, as we've mentioned, and I think there's dates in it that our people are available, and we expect-
Yep.
-and hope that the City's folks are available. I think right now, we have our negotiations team, and they have their negotiations team. And I think that, uh, I think they should engage in the negotiations. But I do think it would be reasonable for Board members, uh, and the Board to continue, if we haven't already, uh, if we have already, um, start to talk to Counsel members about, um, being more motivated to direct them, their folks, and, and talk to the mayor about moving this. Especially now, as the Treasurer has pointed out, that the state foundation money now has absolutely no bearing on the case. It's not a matter of it's not germane. It's now, it is irrelevant. And we have to be very assertive about that, because it's bad enough, we have to abide by the state biennial budgets anyway, and foundations money changing all the time. So it's no longer a germane issue like a negotiations point. It is that it's irrelevant, and we need to proceed. But I, I want to empower our negotiators to begin that process, and I, I, if I'm not mistaken, and I only read it once, but I think that they are already proposing or already developing a proposal that reflects what the Board passed. So to me, that's what the Board's role has been, is to present that resolution and then have the negotiators start to develop what they need to develop and get that meeting going, and then they can share what their expert advice would be as to what that, uh, opening salvo would look like. I say, give it to the folks that, that, no, we did our job, and now we just have to talk to City Council people.
Right. I, I think, I agree to send the letter. I think we should send the letter with all of our names on it. But I think we also need to follow up with a phone call to the mayor's office and say, we got these dates, because this is next week.
Mm-huh.
We, we can't afford to wait for them to pull up another letter. But, so we, I'm, I'm gonna ask, we're gonna ask you, Mr. Hoi, if you would then follow up in a few days after they get it, and get these dates nailed down so that we can sit down, the negotiation teams. If that's okay with the Board.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Last Board Matters item is the CPP Master Agreement. Ms. Bolton, that's you.
Yes. We, and, uh, as you know, in, uh, finance, the finance, financial aspects of preschool promise is addressed on a monthly basis. Uh, and occasionally, we have the Director, and we almost always have the Finance Director. And, uh, the CPP Board has been making some, uh, has been putting together their budget, so that's been presented, and some of the budget items have some proposed changes in them. Uh, and, uh, we've asked, uh, Ms. Westheimer and also, uh, our own Vera Brooks, who already got a kudo tonight. So after that, I would have left. Because it can only go bad and go down after that. But if, if they could, uh, and, and Board members had the statement that Ms. Westheimer made to, uh, to Finance Committee, and the minutes of Finance dealt with this, but right now, these are specific things that our Finance Committee folks, two of whom are not here, they may have felt more comfortable explaining it than I, but we want the experts to explain it to us. So some of this does require Board action and what have you. So if we can start with the Director and then the other Director, we have dual Directors.
Which Director?
Director and Director. So we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. I prepared remarks, but I thought perhaps I should cut right to the chase about what we're asking for. It's a long evening. There are three things, um, one of which requires a change to the master agreement. The first thing that does not require a change, uh, budget, is a budget issue, is, um, we are authorized under the master agreement, uh, for both CPS and the preschool promise to increase tuition reimbursement levels three percent per year. We did not do that last year, and we have worked together to incorporate, uh, six percent, compounded, which is just a slight bit more than that, into this coming school year budget. So that is one of the things, because it isn't under the three percent this year. It's something that requires, uh, support from the Board. The other two things, um, have to do with, uh, they're related. One has to do with the fact that, based on the RAND report, a determination was made that it costs a certain amount to provide quality preschool at five stars. So at four stars, maybe it costs ten percent less and we'll pay ninety percent, and at three stars, it costs twenty-five percent less and we'll pay seventy-five percent of that amount. What has resulted is an issue that is in conflict with or opposed to the preschool promises equity policy, which is mirrored almost precisely after years, and has created an inequity between the single-site, neighborhood-based, uh, preschool providers and what the very large organizations and CPS are able to do. For instance, um, we're expecting them all to get to five stars, but we are paying less than it costs to get to five stars. The State of Ohio raised its reimbursement rates for the publicly-funded childcare, and we have found that our three-star programs are paying, we are paying less for a child's preschool than the State is now paying. And the State says, you cannot, you cannot accept a funding source that is less than the State pays. And so our providers asked us to allow parents to make a copay. In other words, the low-income parents were being asked to make up the twenty-five percent that we weren't paying. I'm saying this in sort of a complicated way, but essentially, we have put both families and the three- and four-star centers at a disadvantage to getting to five stars. We would like to pay three, four, and five stars at the same rate, um, as one another, and then we would like to make another proposal. So that's a formula change in the master agreement. We would like to make another proposal that complements and supports the work that we think we need to do to get all programs up to five stars. The master agreement says the minute somebody is granted three stars, or four, or five, we cut off their professional development, their coaching, their support, their continuous improvement. I was very struck by the presentation tonight about professional development and the way CPS embraces, uh, continuous learning and improvement. And at the Finance Committee, it was clear to me that, um, the members believe that the preschool promise in the community ought to be encouraging continuous improvement as well. So to help the programs, the three and fours, get to five stars, to, to embrace the continuous improvement, we would like to be able to provide coaching and training services to all the programs that are engaged in the Cincinnati Preschool Promise. So the three things are the six percent increase, paying three, four, and fives at the same rate, and, um, supporting those three, four, and five-star programs in continuous improvement.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
But the only two changes to the master agreement were requests two and three, right?
Requests two and three. The first one does, because it exceeds three percent in one year, takes a budget, uh, I'm looking to the Treasurer to say, does that need a Board vote? It does not require a master agreement change, but does it require a Board support?
Correct. So the agreement allows for up to a three percent per year change, but because we're trying to do two in one year, to be fully transparent, I wanted a Board adoption of that rate. So it does not require an agreement change.
Okay.
Plus, it has budgetary impacts, so I wanted to make sure that our budget supports that change as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm unclear, because you said the, the agreement called for a three percent increase, and we're looking to do two years in one, a six percent increase?
So we actually skipped a year. We missed that, I guess, in all the transition and stuff like that, we just missed making that change last year. So this year, we're doing, it's compounded. So we're acting as if we did it last year, and then again this year to catch back up.
So is there, is there something, is there a catch-all in the agreement that allows for that? That compounding? Because if the agreement doesn't allow for that, then there would need to be a change in the agreement.
No, the agreement allows for up to a three percent per year. We just missed it last year, so we're just- No, Dan?
So broadly interpreted, maybe.
I don't know the agreement for me, but I believe the agreement says that it calls for up to three percent without order. If you go beyond three percent, it requires order. It doesn't require a change in the agreement.
Got you. Got you, that's, that's different.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Who did I see? Ms.?
You go, go over there.
Mr. Morowski?
Thank you, Ms. Westheimer.
He would be on the left.
Is there, um, do you by chance have any ballpark type of number about what it would cost to make up, or supplement, rather, that copay that parents are being asked to pay?
Yes, to, um, equalize the, the three, four, and fives, it will cost around a hundred thousand dollars.
A year?
Uh, there are, um, just thirteen, I just want to check my numbers. I think, um, uh, thirteen percent of the children are in three and four stars. The remainder are in five stars. The overwhelming majority of the, uh, families are taking advantage of the five-star centers.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Ms., um, Bolton?
So if we made the, if we made the changes that you're proposing, that copay would not have to happen?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, that's the way to correct the co-pay piece. The, uh, Finance Committee, when we were gathered together and heard this, Finance Committee, you know, of course, turned to the treasurer about the money and, and, and her views. And we will do that again, and also turned to Ms. Brooks about her opinion and superintendent's opinion. But I do know that the Finance Committee was very leery and hopeful that we would not have to open the whole agreement, but rather, it would be a very specific reopening of, of a particular topic. That whether it's, what the legal terminology is, there was no interest on either side of that table to reopen the agreement, and so, to make it as narrow as possible.
We have made a number of adjustments along the way by mutual agreement, and that's what the intent would be here.
Okay. So, anything else from you, Sally, or Mr. Davis? Did you have a follow-up question?
I just wanted to thank Sally.
Oh, okay.
Sally, you're making it real hard on that next director. I'm telling you, you're making it real hard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This, this is, uh, beginning to be her swan song. Did, did...
Hold on, Vera, um, did you want to add to anything on that? Okay. Let me do the great job. Thank you.
But, do you have agreement? You're recommending?
Okay. So, what I'm hearing, and it sounds like it's, this is an assignment that goes back to Finance Committee, to develop, uh, recommendations, or do we need...
No, I think it, based upon where Finance, Finance was, and based upon the minutes, that Finance is done with this. And it goes back to the administration, uh, to do what they need to do if they're obviously in agreement. And then, they would bring it back to the full board for whatever the board needs to have done.
Yeah, I, I think my question was going to be, is this an assignment? So, that's what it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay.
So, that'd be assignment, Mr. Moing, and said he would help write up an agreement? Or what was the term you used? Just to write it up, an amend-agreement? Amendment.
Okay.
Amendment?
Yes, amendment.
All right.
But just to, just to be clear, the increased rate, the 3%, 3%, is included in the treasurer's report? And we can talk, when it, when it comes up, I can explain it further.
Yes, oh, that's right.
But both CPS and CPP both benefit from that rate change. So, I just want to make sure that when you approve the treasurer's report, you are approving that rate change.
Got you.
So, the amendment then would just be on the two points, correct?
Yes.
Of paying the same for three, four, five, and the training for three, four, five, once they've received their ratings.
Okay.
Okay.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Vera.
All right. Anything else then related to the, uh, master agreement, Ms. Bolton?
I would just echo what everybody has, has said, um, that I think this is, Ms. Westheimer's, uh, swan song almost. And I know we appreciate her coming in and, and riding the ship, so to speak. And, um, no one else in the city could have done what she did.
Yes. Thank you. And this was, I just want to comment, this process, I, I believe, came out of the collaborative meeting where we were talking about changes or considerations for changes with the master agreement. So, we didn't have to open up the whole discussion, but this gets to the point that we were trying to make, that there did need to be some things. That's right. You, absolutely. Thank you. All right. Okay. Okay, so, we're, um, we're at resolutions. And, uh, both of them are related to alcohol waivers, so, Mr. Davis, I'm gonna ask you to do both of them. Alcohol, I was gonna say alcohol, that's why.
I'll ha-I'll handle this, Mr. Morowski.
Oh, we're...
No, just...
Okay, got you.
Um, a resolution to request a waiver for alcohol use at Withrow High School by the Withrow High School Alumni Association. I present this resolution as written for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Question?
Yes, Ms. Bolton.
As I always ask, the word alcohol means beer and wine.
Actually, they're just doing mimosas.
For a brand?
Just wine.
Okay. Champagne. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski? President Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Davis?
A resolution to request a waiver for alcohol use at the School for the Creative and Performing Arts by the SCPA Fund. I present the resolution as written for adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll ask again, alcohol means beer and wine?
Yes, beer and wine.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski? President Jones?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do have a very brief report. Um, I anticipated, um, being able to have Mr. Johnson present, but since he is working with parents, I can do an update to the board at a later time. Just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that school started last week, so we're very excited to welcome back our students. For everyone to know, we opened, um, three new building sites, two new schools. And so, the Mercy Building did open as Gamble Montessori High School, uh, last Tuesday, so we're very excited about that. And then, also, um, the Elementary Montessori Gamble opened on Monday, which is a brand-new school. And a beautiful site, it's, it looks very good, as well as Mercy. And then, our final one is Cairns, and so, that school. All of them are lovely buildings with lots of beautiful, wonderful children inside them. Um, just to, yes, that is exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to give a little context to the work, um, that it takes to open a school, especially at the beginning of the school year, we onboarded close to 500 employees for this school year. The customer help center received 1,400 visits in the month of August and 13,000 phone calls. Our employee care center has seen over 2,500 people since it opened in January. So, um, just wanted to acknowledge all the people who do the hard work of getting our schools open and running at the very beginning of the school year. And that's my report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Wagner.
So, I wanted to kind of tag-team on Superintendent Mitchell's opening, school opening comments. Just to let you know that last Friday was the first payroll of the school year, when all the school-based employees came back. We had a really neat thing happen, where we created our call center, which we typically do for the first couple payrolls of the year. But this, this time, it was staffed by over 51 employees across six departments, um, including talent development and curriculum. And even Ms. Bunty brought donuts to help everybody. But, um, we issued 5,247 paychecks, um, and we logged 263 calls, which are not always complaints, sometimes it's just a question. We had a little bit of a snafu related to time reporting of the new PD way we were doing things. So, um, taking that out of consideration, we had a 98% accuracy rate on the first paycheck of the year. So, we're really proud of that, and, um, we're really proud of the class collaborative department team that helped. So, I just wanted to do a big shout-out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Did you want me to explain the United Way payment thing first, or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
So, um, in the treasurer's report on page, let me find it real quick.
It was on the old...
Eleven.
Eleven.
Page 11, yes, thank you. Um, so, every year, at the end of the fiscal year, this Cincinnati preschool promise, trusted any United Way, whatever monies are unspent are supposed to be returned to the district. But we have a policy that says if it's less than 10%, they keep it, and then we come up with a spending plan. So, there, this year's unspent monies, um, came up to 2.8 million, which is over the 10% budget allocation. So, instead of them returning us a big check, we just don't make the first quarterly payment. Um, and then, you can see how it's reduced, so we try to show you that we pay four times, and then what those values are in maintaining that money. The unspent funds are, are put in a special cost center that's specifically targeted for preschool expansion, so it can't be spent on other operations. And then, both the value, their budget of $8.9 million includes that rate change. We, I worked with their, Hector Polanco, that, their finance director. And so, um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what they were voting for. Any other questions about that?
Mr. Davis?
I just got a quick question about, um... I don't know what it means that you have this proposed change to the, to tuition way in the treasurer's report. I understand that we just agreed to do it, but this doesn't qualify to, this, this doesn't translate to any money or, or numbers-wise, does it?
Yeah, so, we're increasing the, the per pupil rate for the five-star centers. In the master agreement currently, a five-star center gets 100% of tuition rate with the families that qualify under that income level, and if they're full-time students. That was 85, 81, so that's being increased to consider the, um, cost of living increases.
So, this is probably ahead of the change in the master agreement?
That, point A does not need a change in the master agreement.
Point B, point B.
Yes, yes. I'm just letting you know that they've included that in their budget, but they can't put it into action until the master agreement gets changed.
Right, so, by my agreeing to it, I don't think it makes a difference. All right, I take my, thank you.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, inquiries and updates. Pretty quickly, gonna go through these. Uh, just a reminder, I'm sorry, yes. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm kidding, President Jones. Uh, my quick update is, um, and I talked to, um, Ms. Bolton about this, um, because we had talked about it in SAC, but I just want to update the whole board. So, the Safe Routes to School, um, and the redrawing of the district safety plans, obviously, a top priority for all of us. And at that meeting, a couple meetings ago, we talked about all the different, you know, hands in the pot and how we're trying to bring them together. I had a call with Mel McVay at the city, and with somebody who works in her office. They had spoken with ODOT, and ODOT is interested in looking at the district safety plan, and the Safe Routes plan, and all that sort of thing. Um, and so, we had a 10-minute phone call max last Friday. Um, and the only question they had for me was, um, that ODOT wanted to know, are we interested in, like, the district-wide safety plan? And I said, yes, district-wide, not piecemeal. We don't want to do a piecemeal thing. Um, and so, uh, that's my only update. Um, I think it's good news, because we've been talking about this for about a year. And, uh, ODOT is paying attention and working with the city in partnership with us, and there's not a thousand little subcommittees running around and people talking over each other. And so, for the time being, I assume any updates would be given in SAC and then be reflected in the minutes, so that I don't have to do this every time, it'll be reflected in the actual minutes. So, I just want everyone to know that that happened.
Thank you. Okay, any other before we go through these documents? Okay, uh, just a reminder that we have, uh, our calendars that indicate which of our board meeting dates are at school sites. So, please make note of that on your calendars. Don't know off the top of my head where they are, but we asked the administration to do it, uh, based on quadrant, so it should indicate that.
Do we...
All right.
Do we know, uh, where are they?
I didn't, it, you got it on your... It should be on your calendar that we just got...
It was on an email, too. It was emailed to us.
It's on your, it's on your list of...
It was emailed to us, too.
On your upcoming board...
And I'm thrilled, if I can, October 2nd, we will be at, um, the Gamble Montessori High School, uh, the new one.
Yay!
Exciting, very exciting to be there for that. We will also, the previous week, I believe that's September, I don't want to speak on the date, I believe it's September 23rd, uh, at Cairns, Clifton Area Neighborhood School. And our final, uh, meeting of the year will be at Kilgore, one of our Vision 2020 4.0 schools.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. Okay, and so, there have been, um, Father Graham and I have talked about scheduling the next collaborative meeting in our conversations, and I believe that the superintendent and Ms. Westheimer have also come together, and Vera, on some dates as well, um, for other meetings. But the collaborative meeting, there's two proposed dates. One is, uh, Octo-, it's October 8th or October 10th, I believe. So, um, it would be helpful if we can determine, I believe we have a, a board meeting that week as well. Ms. Brooks? We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to mention that, you may have put in for this area, this room, they had mentioned that there's another big activity happening on October 2nd. So, the 10th, like, I think that...
The 10th, okay. We can, I, is that, is that okay with board members?
The 8th is better for me.
Okay. The other option would be, and I believe, Ms. Brooks, you worked on this, so I want you to hear this, is, uh, uh, we were gonna host it again, and there was a previous conversation that Father Graham and I had that we might want to alternate. If, if people can do it, if people want to do it on the 8th, maybe we could do it at their site, and they can host. Is it, okay. So, Mr. Davis is saying the 8th would work better?
I can make the Thursday work, but the Tuesday is better for me.
Okay. All right. Yes.
I think that, I think it's a great... I think it's a great idea to alternate. I would just make sure, though, that we're able to broadcast and stream, uh, if we have to, if, in another facility.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Appreciate that.
I'm into broadcasting.
Ms. Brooks, will you follow up on that for us? Okay, thank you. All righty. All right, so, the next update, we did agree with much trepidation, but we agreed to have the property developers come in and just do a short presentation on their perspective on the tax abatement. And it's interesting, because I had a conversation again with somebody who just totally doesn't understand the school position about it. So, I think it would be a worthwhile time just to do this presentation. Uh, the dates, the two dates that we're looking at are the September 16th or the 23rd, which is our regular board meeting. I believe so. Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Morowski?
Those are the two, and you already know this, like, because I'd emailed you and Phil at St. Pat. Those are the two. I won't be here for either one of those.
Okay. And I was trying to get it when most board members would be here and have the discussion. So, any preference for dates? And they were also gonna check to their schedules as well. Okay, all right. I'll nail down one for us. How about that? Okay. All right, and then, finally, um, when I look back on our, uh, some old assignments and things that we had talked about a while ago, we made a decision to, um, acknowledge the work of a person who passed, who happens to be the wife, worked in our district, but happens to be the wife of one of our council members. And we said we were gonna do it. We have a resolution that was passed, it's in a plaque. Um, but it was brought to my attention that we don't necessarily have a process for how we decide how to do that. So, there are two concerns here, or two issues. One is, we probably, because we've had conversation with them, and at the time that we wanted to do it in February, they were still grieving, family was still grieving, and they are now ready to accept the resolution on the 16th, if that's possible. Then, maybe an assignment, I don't, because I checked our policies, and we don't necessarily have a policy that outlines how we acknowledge community members. It's sort of been as things happen. happen, but I recall when we did the same kind of memorial for Chris, we just made a decision to do it and move forward. I don't know if the board wants to formalize that or not, it would be fine if we didn't, I think, but when these things come up, it's, we need to, if we make a decision about something, I think we definitely have to follow through and honor what we said we were going to do. Any thoughts about that? Okay, hearing none. We will have this, we will present the resolution to that family on September 16th, if board members are okay with that. Okay. And Ms. Bolton, you look like you're about to say something.
Yeah, the 16th, it'd be, if, if we have the Smithman family coming, it would be better than if we had the property people here on the 23rd.
I know, I thought about that, yes.
Because he's been very involved, and it will look bad. Be the city and, and his property tax work group will look like it was arranged, so thank you.
That, that's a good point, thank you. Okay, great. Are there any assignments? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
I have an assignment, and that is that I do want to see the three things that are part of that logo. And they are the academic achievement, personal well-being, and career readiness on our logo. I am living with the hands, I know that this is a year-long thing to even think about rebranding a logo, but that, those three things need to be, when we publish stuff, there somewhere, because that is the essence of the strategic plan. Period, over and done with. I want to see it, I'm going to get one of those markers, and I'm going to start writing it. Well, we wanted, we, I don't care if it looks pretty or not, I want to start to see it since we unveiled our strategic plan. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, next assignment? Next assignment? Okay, we had an assignment to Mr. Hoying. Can somebody repeat that, please? This was the one related to the letter? We asked, you got it, we asked Mr. Hoying to send the letter with all board members' names, and then to follow up to confirm dates for the negotiation team.
And a second one to Mr. Hoying on the agreement, the master agreement addendum or amendment.
Thank you. Any other assignments? Okay, I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider employment of a public employee or official and sale of property at competitive building, bidding, sorry. I need a motion. Is there a second?
Second, I second.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Hi.
Mr. Davis?
Hi.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you.
I know, I'm, yeah, well, people, sometimes they need reminders, okay. Yeah, well, I know, that's why I said that, but I always try to remind people, because people always say they need it.